Good evening. Calling the meeting to order, welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Regular Board of Education meeting. It is Tuesday, December the 6th, a little bit after seven, and we're going to get started, first with our roll call. Please announce the role. Lori, please.
Dr. Chang.
Excused.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Present.
Ms. Nazarella.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Dr. Thomas Ferguson.
Here.
Student Representative Megan Murphy.
Here.
Student Representative Caitlin Strif Cave.
Here.
Thank you so much. And Megan, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, and now it is time for public communications. This is an opportunity where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your concerns. We have revised the way in which we have our public communication in that we are prioritizing those speaking on agenda items to go first. And for this evening, the agenda items entail nomination of new board member, modification to calendar, revised policies first reading, school day SAT results, and financial report. So we have a list of those who have signed up to speak specifically on agenda items, and then a list on non-agenda items. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak, and while you are talking, please be aware of Lori, who will hold up a card when you have one, a yellow card, when you have one minute remaining in your time. And when your time has expired, we ask for you, please, to respectfully take your seat. So I'm going to first begin with the list that we have of agenda items, those who wish to speak on agenda items. And when you come to the podium, please share your name and your address as well. We first have Anita.
So tonight, I would like to, oh, my name is Anita, and I live at 48 West Normandy Drive. Tonight, I would like to speak about two topics. The first topic is topic of a minutes, and the second topic will be the first reading of policy 3140 and 3440. In terms of minutes, I would like it recorded in the minutes that the microphone was intentionally turned off during my public comment of three minutes at the last meeting. With all due respect, whoever turned off my microphone by the mere act of doing this solidified my complaint.
Excuse me, Anita, pardon the interruption. That's a non-agenda item, so if you can reserve that when we speak on non-agenda items. But the second item you wanted to talk about, I believe, was an agenda item.
Aren't you voting on minutes?
That's not an agenda item. So the agenda items I listed, so we can, we'll pause the clock just out of respect for your remaining time. And I believe you had two items you wanted to speak of, and the second item was on which, once again?
So I limited my talk, but that's okay. I'll just speak on the one item, and it's the first reading of policies 3140 and 3440. If Dr. Murray would pass the paperwork, what you'll find is, so what is presented to you is actually not what is available for the public. And so what I have done is carried forward what is on the website. The second point, which is very important, is the policies that the superintendent's office is completely different than the policies we are aware of, and by the way, I've been referencing these policies since 2019. The supposed policies that are being put forth completely deviate in spirit from what the Connecticut legislatures have enacted. With all due respect to the superintendent's office, I defer to the statutes written by the legislators, legislators, who have many more experiences in writing these policies and breadth of knowledge in understanding the pitfalls that have been seen with the different school districts that exist not only in Connecticut but in the country. The spirit of the actual statutes maintains all authority with the board and does not allow the usurping of authority by the superintendent's office. One pitfall is the pitfall that currently exists, which I will directly state, that since my February 15 Freedom of Information request to the Director of Finance, I still have not received all the receipts and flow of fund information. So I think if you're going to vote on a policy change for 3140 and 3440, I would say you can just take the statute and just vote on that, because that was well-written and well-enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Addie.
Good evening. Addie Lord, in 561 Park Road. I too am speaking on policy 3140 and 3440. With regards to 3140 budget procedures in line item transfers, this isn't just revised, it's completely rewritten. And what it essentially does removes, it removes the fiscal authority from the Board of Education and places it under the superintendent. The policy is also rewritten, removing the cap of 5% for transfers of the annual budget. This means that the superintendent essentially can do whatever he wants or she wants with the budget and transfer line items from one to the other. Now, if the Board of Education objects, they have to put it in writing. In most towns, in most states, in fact, in most countries, the superintendent answers to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education answers to the public when it comes to public spending. The authority should not be given just solely to the superintendent's office, and especially not without accountability. 3440, school activity funds. Again, this is not just a change of a couple of words. This is essentially completely rewritten, and it seems to be carrying on from 3140 in giving the superintendent more fiscal authority. In fact, Part III reads, "Such fund of schools and school organizations as the superintendent or his or her designee may determine to be in the best interest of the school district, which funds may include amounts received as gifts or donations, and all accounts are considered town accounts." So this means any donations coming in from outside sources, such as the West Hartford Foundation, or any will requits that former, say, students leave, they all go to the superintendent at his discretion to disperse, including and not limited to PTO funds even. And I'll give you an example of why this is not a good idea. Most PTOs earmark their funds for specific programs each year, and I can only speak from my experience, but when I was an auditor, out of the 15,000, 2,000 of that fund that we handed over was actually spent on Brain Pop. This was not sanctioned by our PTO. It was not accounted by the principal. Two, over $2,000, which was supposed to go to field trips, student supplies, makerspace, and other programs. It was spent on something that should have been covered by WHPS, and no accounting has been given. And $100 of a donation that was given by a member of the public to the PTO was never accounted for either. It went into the black hole, the town coffers.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Walsh.
My agenda item is going to lead into a non-agenda item, so I don't want to be embarrassed like the first speaker. So can I go last? I don't know if you're worried about that.
Thank you for respecting the process, yes. Next, we have Ellen Nichols.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Nichols. I live on North Quaker Lane, and my topic tonight is the superintendent search. I want to commend the Board of Ed for holding focus groups to gather insight from parents, affinity groups, students, teachers, and staff as to what they want in our new school leader. I also want to acknowledge that you have added a focus group for the community at large, which will be held next Monday evening at 7:00 o'clock in the Town Hall Auditorium. I haven't received the email invitation to that yet, but it is posted on the website, and we're waiting for the email to go out to the general, all the residents in town, I assume. I understand that CES had 500 responses to its online survey, so that's the, we just talked about the focus groups, but the survey, which was done last month. So that's great, 500 responses. In the interest of transparency, Lorna, we look forward to you making the summary results of both the survey and the focus groups available to the townspeople, hopefully at the next board meeting and also on the Board of Ed site under superintendent search. Thank you.
Thank you. And so those are all that I have listed here for agenda items. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay. Now, to non-agenda items, Mark.
Mark Walsh, 33, Huckleberry Lane. My comments tonight, please keep in mind, are going to refer back to a year ago, December 1st, when an 11-year-old student was left alone in a bathroom and harmed themselves at Bristow Middle School. So you're going to talk about school safety and security tonight, and risk management, which I'm familiar with as being a firefighter, is pretty big with keeping the town and especially a school safe. So there's usually components involved in these models, and I use the FEMA one, which was mitigation, preparedness, recovery, and response. And when a tragedy happens, I always added my own component, is when there's a response from the community, from the government, then we have to own it. Whether we did everything right, whether we did everything wrong, or in between, you have to own it first. And I'd like to give you an example of a city that didn't do the right thing. Some years ago in Hartford, there was a garage collapse, and firefighters responded, and there were quite a few people out front speaking in Spanish. The firefighters had no idea what they were saying. They did a review of the collapsed garage, and they left. An hour later, somebody who was bilingual was able to decipher that there was a child in the debris. Firefighters went back an hour later. Unfortunately, this young child expired. Eight years ago, while I was still on the job, I lost a brother firefighter in a house fire. Pretty nondescript, if you saw the building, you would, you know, in fact, related to Bristow. If you stood outside Bristow, or this house where I lost a brother firefighter, you would look at the structure and go, how did anybody die in there? Outside of a couple broken windows the following days, there was no roof collapse, no explosion. But they did a hurried, you know, investigation and came up with a report that left out so many, so many, or left holes in the whole investigation. They finally brought in an outside source to really look into it, and they found well over a dozen things that led up to the death of the firefighter. When I look at the report, which I grabbed on the Bristow incident, this was a hurried investigation, only done in a few days. We need to have an outside source come in and explain to us all the things that led up there. I encourage everyone who is disturbed by an 11-year-old committing suicide on public property in a school to grab the report, grab a magic marker like I did, read it as many times as you can, and then find, me, I'm fortunate, I have resources. I went to many firefighters and chiefs and everybody in between, and both fire and police. I know mental health professionals. Everybody who read that report told me that it's incomplete, many things went wrong, and we need to recover from this tragedy in our town. I know we're worried about copycat suicide. I personally am also concerned about copying all the poor decisions that we made regarding the Bristow incident.
Excuse me, your time has expired.
So I'm hoping one of you's will open up another investigation, or at least ask for one.
Excuse me. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, or to continue speaking on an agenda item?
Should I just start from the beginning, then, I guess?
Please restate your name, yes.
Anita Rakhalian. As everyone, or some people know, at the last meeting, the microphone was intentionally shut off. So in terms of the minutes, I would like it recorded in the minutes that the microphone was intentionally turned off during my public comment of three minutes. I would like it noted in today's minutes that I feel that this aggressive act interfered with my freedom of speech, and most importantly, it highlights what we parents and caregivers have been stating, that the leadership doesn't listen to speech, that questions or criticizes the shortcoming of the public school system. With all due respect, whoever turned off my microphone by the mere act of doing this solidified my complaint and the complaint of others, that the leadership is not, not only in touch with what is going on in the buildings and in the classroom, but that the leadership is willing to breach the public's First Amendment rights, which includes free speech, the right to gather, such as we're doing here right now, and the right to a free press. I do hope that the person who turned off my microphone didn't interfere with the right to a free press. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from, excuse me, any other comments on non-agenda items? Thank you. We will pause on public communications, and now we'll move on to non-staff communications and reports, and this is where we're able to hear from our student representatives. So first, we will hear from Caitlin, speaking regarding Hall.
Hi, everyone. A few short things to bring up about the last two weeks at Hall High School. First of all, tomorrow, we have a presentation on having difficult conversations with Rosalind Wiseman. She wrote the book that inspired Mean Girls, so there was some fun things going on with that. And this Friday, we have a comedy improv show, and we also have the Unified Theater Show, so a lot of stuff. And also, next week, we have the Little Shop of Horrors musical. So we have a lot of things going on in the Black Box and the musical theater and theater department, so it's cool. Winter sports are starting up, which is exciting. New, new season, new sports, all very fun, all very cold. And finally, PJ Day is on Friday for the Connecticut Children's Hospital, and if you'd like to donate, you can go to the Hall website. Well, technically, you could also go to the Conard website, but you should go to the Hall website, and you should press donate, and you can bring in some money for that, and then wear PJs to support. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Caitlin. Megan, speaking regarding Conard.
Good evening, everyone. So similar to Hall, like Caitlin just said, we have PJ Day on Friday, and again, just a really great opportunity for everyone to donate, and it'll be great for everyone to wear PJs in support of the kids who wear their PJs in the hospital. Just today, there was a Unified Leadership Conference, and it was just an opportunity for students of all abilities who participate in Unified Theater. They all came back very excited about ways to improve our program, which is already amazing, but just ways that we can continue to improve. And really, everyone felt like they had a voice and could share their ideas, so it was a great opportunity for them. Also, today, there was an Equity Squad Leadership Training Meeting from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It was a great opportunity for, I think, 40 Hall and Conard students to speak on, like, past, present, and future, just what we're doing, again, just how they're improving, give a voice to everyone. This past week, the FEOD students got to go to three of our elementary schools, Walgett, Charter Oak, and Brayburn, and they got to read books. To some of them, it was even their elementary school and teachers that they have had, so it was a great opportunity for them, full circle moment. Also, in our district, Acting, the Acting II class at Conard went to Charter Oak, I believe, and they had written and adapted a version of Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, which they got to perform to these elementary school students. Lastly, our Conard football program and Coach Sorsasimo were awarded the CCC Sportsmanship of the Year program award at this past meeting, so it was a great recognition for our program. But yeah, again, also, winter sports have begun, and so exciting announcements to come on that.
All right. Thank you, Megan. Now, excuse me, now moving on to unfinished business, which we do not have any of. So going to new business, starting with nomination, appointment, and swearing in of a new board member. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Renee Kameoff as a member of the West Hartford Board of Education to fill the position vacated by Ms. Deb Poland through November 2023, and that Ms. Essie LeBrow swear-in Dr. Renee Kameoff as a new board member. And so with that, we will now ask for Ms. LeBrow to please come forward, Essie, please to come forward, and for Dr. Kameoff to please come forward.
Would you raise your right hand, please? And do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully perform according to law your duties as a member of the West Hartford Board of Education to the best of your ability, so help you God? Congratulations.
So Dr. Kameoff, please join us here. Get your belongings, yes, yes, indeed. Welcome again. And so we are honored to have you here at the table with us, and I speak of this on behalf of all of us here at the table. And although Dr. Chang is not physically here with us, he certainly shares in the enjoyment of you being a part of our team. And so thank you so very much. And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn by saying our whole team here collectively receives you, and again, we're glad you have joined us. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much for welcoming.
Absolutely. Thank you. And so we will now continue on to the modification to the 2022-2023 school calendar. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education approve a modification to the 222-223 school calendar to make Friday, December the 23rd, 2022, an early dismissal, or similar to a Wednesday release. And so, just passing it to Dr. Murray.
Yeah, if you remember, we spoke of this at the last meeting, and you agreed that this was a path you wanted to take and such, and so this is simply the formality of formally voting through the calendar change.
Thank you. And so is there a motion to have the Wednesday, or rather, on Friday, December the 23rd, 2022, to have that as an early dismissal? Do we have a motion? I move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Claire. Thank you, Ari. Any discussion? All right. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Sensations? The ayes have it. All right. Half-day on the 23rd. Excellent. Thank you so much. Going on to see, motion by Dr. Lorna Thomas Ferguson, Dr. Gail Harris, and Dr. Jason Chang to accept revised policies as a first reading. And so we have several policies that we are going to be presenting to you, and thank you so much, Ms. McKernan, for joining us here. And as we know, we have been going through several rounds of first readings and then second readings and votes, so we have a new round to present to you, that being from our policy subcommittee, which is represented by Dr. Gail Harris, and Dr. Jason Chang, and myself. And so the policies that we are presenting as a first reading include Community Relations Series 1000, beginning with policy 1252, pesticide application; 1900, school safety and security; 3140, board budget procedures and line item transfers; 3440, student activity funds; 4300, employees and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990; 4400, Plan for Minority Education Recruitment; 4500, evaluation, termination, and non-renewal of athletic coaches; 5150, physical restraint and seclusion of students and use of exclusionary timeout; 5500, high school graduation requirements; 5525, chemical health policy for student athletes; 5600, management plan and guidelines for students with food allergies, lichen storage disease, and/or diabetes; 6300, promotion and retention; 6320, weighted grading and calculation of grade point averages; and 6342, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Alternative Assessment for Students with Disabilities for statewide and district-wide assessments. Is there a motion to accept these as a first reading?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Claire. Discussion. And so I will start off the discussion just by sharing that with the policies that we have just made reference to as a first reading, as we've experienced before, these are policies that will help align us with state and federal statutes. And so although we are going through the formalities of voting them in, just want to say that we certainly want to comply as much as necessary with policies that are regulated by our state and federal government. However, we want to have a voice in the process as well. And so with to have a voice in the process as well. And so with what has been presented, questions, comments, discussion? Yes. Claire.
Yes. So in looking at these, I don't see any, I'm assuming each was brought up at another time and approved. Some have different dates of when we accepted them. I mean, I've been part of the policymaking that we just made a change to. So these look like edits, but is there any way to find out, or how does one, and maybe, Gail, you could answer this, of when some of these were first brought to the board? Like, how old are some of these?
I'll ask, I'll defer to Ann only because it predates, Gail.
Yes. Thank you for the question, and I would like to start off by welcoming our new board members. Nice to meet you. And then to answer your question, yes, on our website, we'll show the dates of the adoption. I've left those off here, so we'll show the original date and any time it's been revised since. I know when they're finally adopted and finalized, I add the date at which you did it and then post them. So I can get you any particular date. Occasionally, there's a brand-new policy, but these are generally not new. They generally are existing that we have revised.
So I don't need the dates, but I'm just assuming these have already had a discussion with prior boards?
Yes.
Or been?
Oh, yes.
So this is just a minor edit of something that was approved years back?
The majority of these have very small edits in them, and you can see by the blue line, in fact, the first one just really was replacing the word "West Hartford" or "Board of Education," very, very small in most cases. There are some that have a little bit more because statute changed. And there you'll see more edits in either blue or red. But that's really helped you to follow along with what was changed?
If I could, and remember also, Claire, that the major changes of this are to align with the statutory changes that have been put in place since the board adopted the policy book in 2020.
Other questions, comments? Ethan?
Yeah, I had several on the finance ones. And I'm also struggling in that, I know we're not supposed to respond to things, but is this just the changes that were made? Because the comment was made that there was more to it, and all you did is change "Board of Education." I mean, I have questions beyond that, but I just.
Sure. I can tell you that this is, these are simply statutory changes to the policy book that the board adopted in 2020. This is the standard, as we said before, the standard shipment in Goodwin, policy book that's developed that boards all across the state are using.
That's what I assumed. It just, I just due diligence, I want to make sure we're not.
If I may, Ethan, too, that. So thank you for that. And as we have in our packets here, with any changes, it gives the original language and then the updated language as well. So you can see any substantive.
Right. And I don't see anything meaningful, but I just.
Correct.
I mean, I have a concern about some of the policy questions, but I don't see anything. That's why I'm just confused why the comment, I don't want to ignore what people say. So. Question, has this ever happened before? I'm referring to 3140. Has there ever been a case where the superintendent moved money? So it's, the policy calls, as I read it.
The policy.
Did I get the two confused?
Yeah. The state, the policy is that the superintendent or agent, in this case, the Finance Director, Ms. Hewitt, has the authority to move funding around underneath the 5% threshold, which for us is roughly $9 million.
Right.
So for, we have the ability, as you know, with the financial examiners, to move funding around to cover different accounts and different issues as they arise. As we see, perhaps, as you know, for the financial examiners, as we see a decrease in teacher salary in what was projected, we may see an increase in contractual services to cover those vacancies. And that's all that that is.
Okay. Then I guess it's terminology and semantics, because to me, you adjust as you go, but you don't formally change the budget. And so I understand, I guess it's a, to me, that, this may sound stupid, but the budget is a same, you know, it's like what you start with and what you end with.
Yeah.
The budget changes, and the budget is meaningless.
And what this is simply, as you know, from the financial examiner piece, is that Liz operates and will transfer from broad budgetary categories to meet.
Right. And I have no problem with that. It's just the terminology of changing budget. I gotta, I gotta go back, and maybe there's a different way to word some of this. If we, let me take a look, and if that's, I realize we're voting on this, but.
You're, well, again, you're only voting, you're just accepting a first reading. If you have questions, the committee can talk about it before the next thing. And I would just, I would, I would just say that I'm not the expert on the terminology piece of it, but this is the standard, this is the standard policy, the way it's written across the state.
Okay. Then, right. Because I, yeah, all right, it's just terminology, so I'll go back. The 3440, looking for clarification. When does this happen in sort of trying to, so we have 181 million, this is on top of the 181, or 71 million?
This is completely separate and different. But imagine, the students want to go on a field trip.
Yep.
So they're going to send in $10 each or $20 each, and that gets collected. And so there's a variety of categories like that. But I'll use the field trip example. They're all going to go to the Sturbridge Village, so they're all going to pay whatever amount to go. There's a need in the school to hold that money and then pay for the bus and pay for Sturbridge Village. So these school activity funds, that's the nature of those funds, is to be able to do school organizations and operate at the school level, to be able to make those things, kinds of things happen. For instance, the prom. The prom, the students all pay at the school office. They pay, they write a check, or they give cash, and they give a receipt, and it goes into an account. And then when it comes time to pay for the prom, there is a business manager at the high schools, or the lead secretary acts in this role at the elementary and middle schools, and they're able to write the check out of this bank account to go to things like the prom.
Okay. Yeah, I just have concerns over the controls. It has nothing to do with the, what we're here to vote on, it's just.
So then, each month, these agents in the school
Yeah.
have to reconcile their bank account each month with the bank and send reports to us.
So maybe that would be possible during the finance examiner, maybe once a quarter, once a year?
I think the way our policy is written is that we also report that to the town on an annual basis on
Okay.
the activities in these accounts.
I've never seen it on the finance examiner's meeting.
I believe it's annual. It's not in the monthly finance, because it's not part of the.
I just think it's a.
It's an idea.
Makes me nervous when there's money, if it's, there's no controls over. And I'm not saying there's no.
I would argue there are controls.
No, I understand.
Okay. So if we're going to talk terminology, there are controls over it. And it's reviewed not only at the building level, but also in our business office on a monthly basis when they reconcile.
Okay. But I think we need to, the board should be at some point of the review, because there's some responsibility there, or we won't have the finance. We can do it offline.
Okay.
I don't want to call, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Gail?
Hi. I just wanted to follow up with the same policy that Ethan was just talking about. And I don't know if either Ann or Andy would know this, but when you talk about these funds that are at each school, are they all handled in a, let's say, in a duplicate manner? Or is, you know, the funds at Brayburn handled one way, and the funds at King Philip handled a different way?
No, they're handled in a very similar manner. They're gonna, the fiscal manager's gonna put the funds in the bank, just like they are required to deposit the funds in the bank, and then to keep a list of their, to keep a bank record of all of their expenditures that come from those funds. And then, as I said, they have to send that in monthly to the business office. So there's.
Each school has its own bank account to do that?
Every school. And just different people manage it. The high schools tend to have more activities, more children, more higher leverage, higher level of activity. So they have a business manager who does this as well as other things. And then the lead secretaries at the other schools handle this responsibility of taking the money, depositing that money, and then writing those checks out to whatever organizations they're going to.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Ari?
I didn't know if Ann or Andy could shed some light on this, but just with regard to Ethan's comment about terminology or the language being used. I mean, these policies are created or edited by lawyers, correct?
Attorneys.
I mean, so I would think that whatever terminology or definitions are being used are up to standard to some level of state statutes and such.
I would even go so far as to say, there's times you, as a group, has said, oh, do we have to use that terminology? And Jessica Ritter has sat here and said, well, that's the terminology in the state legislature. For instance, the example was parent. One of the policies had parent teacher communication. And someone on the board said, could it be guardian? And although we'd made that change, the reason it was parent was because that's the word the legis, was in the statute. So our attorneys at Shippman and Goodwin spend a great deal of time reviewing the statute, the legislation, and then writing the policies to fit. And, you know, I'm very confident that they're very good at their work. And as I think we've mentioned, this firm probably represents 90 or more districts in the state of Connecticut. And that means anyone who subscribes to their policy book has that policy.
Other questions? Are you raising?
I was just waiting, because I'd already asked, so I figured I'd ask again if everybody's had.
Ethan, go right ahead.
Again, it's not the policy. I'm just trying to understand the policy behind it. Are the funds commingled at the various schools with school funds, or are they, is separate account?
They're separate accounts.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, we have received these as a first reading, and the next time they're presented to us, it will be as a second reading, at which time we will then vote on them. Thank you so much, Ms. McKernan. Moving on now to staff communications and reports. We will now receive our superintendent's report. Dr. Murrow, passing it to you.
All right.
With your mic, please.
I'll get there. Thank you. Charter Oak fifth graders decorated and donated a tree to Wadsworth to be a part of the Festival of Trees and Traditions. And our middle school and elementary schools, students will perform as part of this event as we get closer to the holidays. Charter Oak Principal Georgina Rivera was recently published in Edweek, which is a nationwide, a national publication for education and research. King Philip Middle School AP, Mr. Justin Gussi, is a finalist for the Connecticut Middle School Assistant Principal of the Year Award. And so we're hoping, I believe, the visit to the school is tomorrow on that, and we'll know probably closer to after the holidays for that. As I shared with you before, I visited with our bookstore students for the holiday stroll last week in West Hartford, which was a great event. The kids enjoyed. Don't know if you guys were out at all for that, but a fantastic event. I told them that I would share that the bookstore is open Saturdays leading up to the holidays to help with everyone shopping. So if you have, don't know what to get, stop by. And as they put it, they have lots of tchotchke that they've been, that they've been putting out for people. And as well as our culinary students are also preparing cookies and baked goods and such, which we're selling there as well. And so they're very excited about that. As Caitlin mentioned, Hall Unified Theater Program invites you to their production on Friday, December 9, at 7:00 PM. If you haven't had a chance to attend or be a part of Unified Theater at Hall or Connerd, or at any of our schools, it really is an amazing experience, one of the best things that I think we do in all of the schools. Senior parents and students will receive information that the Connecticut State Department of Education has partnered with Connecticut colleges to establish the Connecticut Automatic Admissions Program. Students who meet specific eligibility requirements are automatically accepted into participating college and universities after they graduate from high school. And so letters will be going out in December, individualized letters to students and to parents indicating which specific programs that they qualified for admissions. This is for not only the state schools, but Goodwin University, Mitchell College, University of Bridgeport, University of New Haven, and University of St. Joseph. And so the hope is that by making that easier and also facilitating financial aid placements as well for that, that more students will choose Connecticut schools and the great value that they offer. I'm also excited to announce that we've partnered with Central Connecticut State University, and we'll be hosting an educational leadership cohort specifically for West Hartford Public School employees. This allows CCSU to host the majority of classes in our district, and will be specifically geared towards our teachers who want to pursue administrative certification. And so this takes into account our district calendar, and tuition will be established and paid directly to CCSU, where hopefully that, we're hopeful that this removes some of the barriers, makes it more convenient for people to attend this and to really pursue leadership as whatever path that might take, hopefully within the district. I want to thank Mr. Duarte, who has been instrumental in initiating this program. We opened, he sent out the email, and within the first couple of hours, over 50 teachers indicated that they were interested in pursuing this. And so we're very excited about that. As you know, you know, leadership stability is important, and one of the things that we're hoping is that this helps develop West Hartford's next group of young leaders. And so also, as Caitlin mentioned, we look forward to hearing the feedback and the outcome of the Community Engagement Program on Courageous Discomfort, with Rosalind Wiseman. It's actually tonight at 7:00. So it was.
Our school one is tomorrow.
Yes, your school one is tomorrow. The parent one for parents and for, at both, at both Hall and at KP was this evening as well. But yes, your school assembly one is tomorrow, so we're anxious to hear how that goes as well. So, and that's what I have.
Thank you so much. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding our superintendent's report? All right. Thank you so much. Now, moving on to staff reports and board discussions, we now will receive our 2022 School Day SAT results. And we will welcome to the table Mr. Paul Vicenas and Dr. Michelle Gravelein, who will report to us. Thank you both so much.
Thank you and good evening, and welcome, Renee.
Thank you.
Ah, it was working pretty fun. Excellent. It's a pleasure to be able to be here and report on our 2022, 2022 School Day SAT results. As you'll recall, these are the in-school SAT is offered free of charge from the state of Connecticut as part of our state assessment program, and they made that change some years back. Really made the testing experience for our high school students more relevant, more practical, more useful, and it also had the dual benefit of providing a free administration of the SAT to all students at least once. This is different from our Saturday administrations, which students elect into, and they pay a charge for that that goes to the college board, and we merely facilitate the administration of those tests. So the agenda, we'll go through a little bit, and we will provide some background and context about the SAT itself. I'm not going to get into that in great detail, but if you have more interest in learning about how the SAT is different today from how it was when I took it, when you took it perhaps, you can read about that. And I'm very happy to answer questions if you've read it and have some. But we'll get into our overall trends, and we'll certainly look at how those results are disaggregated across our state-defined categories. So just by way of background, in terms of the tests themselves, and where this, where the scores are set by the state of Connecticut, there are two different benchmark scores for the SAT, and these benchmarks have been set based on research as to what is the likelihood in setting a 75% predictability that a student would be able to earn a C or better in a related first-year college course. So based on that body of research, the college board determined that the score of 480 would be necessary in Language Arts, while a higher score of 530 would be necessary in Mathematics. So in the upcoming slide, you're going to see that when the college board kind of norms their scores and everything, and I think we've seen this, kind of the average score is typically around a 500 nationally. West Hartford averages is obviously slightly higher than that. But the benchmark, in terms of what is then going to be considered goal, will be different, and it's a slightly higher mark in the Mathematics versus the Language Arts. That, again, is simply related to that predictability value, and it's probably one of the more confusing parts of this. So if there are questions. But underneath each heading, it's useful to know, those are the major categories of the current SAT under the redesign, which took place back in 2016, kind of the major areas of emphasis for each of the tests. What we're going to see, and what I'll move to, is the impact of scores. What we're going to see, and what I'll move to, is the impact of scores given the pandemic. This, this 2022 set of scores, this, these are the scores that were taken by juniors. So it is our current graduating class. And our current graduating class was the cohort of students who were new to the high school as freshmen during the, during the pandemic and the shutdown, returned to school as sophomores during, you know, different models for school, hybrid model, one-week attendance on, one-week potentially remote. And then we also had a significant number of students who chose a remote learning experience for the entirety of the year. And then, and then in their junior year would have been their first more typical year at which, at which they returned and took the SAT. So you can see, as we have seen similarly in, in our other state assessment reports that we've given for Smarter Balance in grades three through eight, we, we see an impact to that. And this report is no different, and it will be no different. That impact hit us here. You see for somewhere, these, these are not proficiency rates, these are the actual scores themselves. So you, you see the impact against the four-year average, which is the second-to-last column on the right of each grouping to the 22. A little bit more significant in literacy than it was in mathematics. And we'll look at those in terms of the specific percentages is what that means to be at goal. Because being different by two points, five points, 10 points on the SAT doesn't necessarily have as much meaning and can't necessarily be translated into, does that mean one question less correct or what have you? But what's useful to recognize, I think, for context is, in general, students in West Hartford are scoring in, in around that 560 to 570 range, pretty much for both literacy and math, which is, which is above the national average, you know, typically set for a 500. And you can see the black line is representing the, the level that a child would need to reach to be considered at goal. So it's just a visual representation of that. So now, looking at that specifically, okay, so how many students there for and what's the genuine impact of, of COVID can be easily displayed right here on this very simple graphic. On the left-hand side in light blue, what I did was I took the liberty to, to take the previous four-year average. And that really is just the years from 2016 to 2019. Because the administration of the School Day SAT was very, very different in 2020. In fact, in 2020, it was delayed all the way until 2021. Students had the opportunity to take it in the, at the beginning of the school year as seniors. And then, and then in '21, they took the SAT, but it did not count for, we did not have, none of the state assessments counted towards the federal accountabilities. So this is our first year, it's our new baseline. And, and you can see, we obviously had a five-point dip there in literacy. We had about a three-point dip there in the mathematics. That does track to the same 95% rebound that I talked about when we came up earlier this year and talked about our Smarter Balance results. So while we're not excited by the dip, you know, we do understand the pandemic did in fact happen and, and, and had this very real impact to our scores. We are bolstered by some information. Our scores do place us in the top quarter of schools for, for literacy. They, they place us in the top 20% performance for the state in mathematics. We are very, very competitive with our Derg. Our hits, as you read in the report, our Derg took a bigger hit to their literacy and their mathematics. And therefore, the gap for us between our Derg and English Language Arts, it's only just slightly more than two and a half points. And in math, we're pretty much within one point of the Derg average. And for those at home, that's our demographic reference groups. So it's towns that have similar socioeconomic status and other factors to, to West Hartford. It's Avon, Simsbury, Glastonbury, Farmington, Fairfield, towns, towns that we typically compete with for, for housing and business markets. So it's not a comparison that we shy from, and we're excited that we're, we're very competitive with them. So that's really the best news part of the story. When we disaggregate by high needs, and high needs, I will remind you, is a category defined by the state of Connecticut, students who are identified as students with, with disabilities working with an individualized education plan. They are students that are, that are defined as English language learners, so who receive specialized services to foster their English language proficiency. And students that are economically disadvantaged, as evidenced by their participation in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. And what the state has found is, is, is those are the categories that really drive the higher need for interventions. Obviously, we have an entire special education department that provides specialized services for those students. We have an entire ESOL department that provides services for our English language learners. And we work with any student in terms of access to things, in terms of economics, and then interventions for all kids. But we know from Smarter Balance, we know that the, that this group was the group that was hit the hardest in terms of the impact of this, of this two-year interruption to our typical educational model, and it will require some rebuilding. So at the end of the day, if we look on the right-hand side of the graph, the right-hand side of the graph is West Hartford, the left-hand side of the graph is Connecticut, just for comparative purposes. And we saw a, if I'm on the right slide here, I'm sorry. We saw a six-point drop for our high-needs group within literacy. And it really, from, from the previous four-year average, it's slightly more than that. It's up to potentially eight points from, from our highest score that we had achieved in 2019. And when you see kind of the trajectory that we were on from 2016 to 2019 with this group, we had realized kind of a big gain in 2017 and been able to hold it and then incrementally increase it prior to the pandemic. And that's kind of where we want to go. We noticed on the left-hand side for the state of Connecticut, their performance for the high-need group overall had been pretty flat for that four-year period leading up to the pandemic, and then took a sizable hit, somewhere in the neighborhood of about eight, eight or nine points last year. So work to be done and work that we're continuing to engage in. Our, our current value, where our students landed for the end of this year was at 44.9%. And as you saw in the written report, the comparisons to that previous four-year average is in, as I said, in around a, a six-point drop from, from the previous average. Similar story in mathematics, but kind of more heartbreaking, especially when you look at the bottom of the graph and read upward on the blue side, the, the track record of, of a very sizable and marked improvement that we had been making in mathematics from 2016 through 2019. And unfortunately, you know, seeing that new baseline for 2022 this year. But I'm very, very confident in our programming that over the course of these coming years, and this won't be a one-year and done, but we're going to see marked increases back to normal from that 95% rebound that we're at right now, really back to 100% and then beyond in the out years. But we did obviously realize it's, it's a, it's only a three-point drop from the previous four-year average, but, but it's marked drop from the high that we had been at in 2019 as we were, as we were kind of, kind of just trucking along there and really being excited about our performance overall. So we also disaggregate based on race and ethnicity. And as you saw in the report, I, which I did with Smarter Balance, and I sounded as if that was a helpful comparison. It's the, it's the participation in the high-needs population, if you will. It's if, if, if you're an English language learner, the SAT is a college-level test. When you're coming to high school and not yet proficient in English language, sitting for the SAT is pretty much a tall order, you know? So it's the participation in the high-needs groups that really drives the biggest part of our achievement gaps within race and ethnicity. And that's evidenced here. So the solid lines, and they're color-coded, red as math and blue as language arts or literacy. The solid lines represent the entire cohort of, and this happens to be students of color, so it's students who are Black, Hispanic, or identify as two or more races. And you can see those performance trends over time and the, and this dip that was taken from, from the trajectory of performance. And in the dotted lines, if we control for high-needs group and only look at that, look at students of color who are not in the high-needs group, and we, and we do have a significant number, obviously, you see a much marketed higher scores. There is still a bit of a gap, so I want to highlight some numbers for you. So overall, you know, we're in the neighborhood of about a 24-point gap, 24, 25-point gap for this subgroup from the all-students group. But when you control for high-needs, it's only a three-point gap in literacy from, from the overall average for West Hartford. So a very small, it is still sizable in math at 12 points. And that tells us of work that we need to do, early identification, diversifying, you know, that, you know, reducing that opportunity gap pretty much somewhere in middle school where, where students start to separate into different leveled classes. It was reported about Asian students in the written report. I didn't prepare a separate slide. Those students did also see a gap from their typical perform, a drop from their typical performance of about 10 points. But that gap, there is no, there is no real achievement gap or no sizable achievement gap for our Asian population with our all-students group. They perform equivalently or, or perhaps slightly above in math, in mathematics specifically from the district average. That's pretty much a quick overview to high-level stuff. I want to, I want to certainly, as a public service announcement, you know, talk about what's available to students and families for free preparation on the SAT. And Khan Academy is a great partnership that the college board has created in to provide free and then individualized kind of, kind of improvement planning, if you will. And the data themselves are, that are here can also be accessed publicly on the state website, as, as is the case for all of our state assessments. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and discussion.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments regarding what we have received? Yes, Claire?
Yeah, so could you help me understand the SAT day scores compared to the SAT Saturday? And I know that we have a large number of kids that now take the day test, and there's no fee. But is it still weighted the same within universities? And then do students do study courses prior to the day SAT like they might for the Saturday SAT?
Excellent questions. Thank you, Claire. So first and foremost, there, there is no difference of weighting. I want to, I want to lead with that because I think that's the headline. The, the School Day SAT is simply something that is provided by the state of Connecticut at no charge as a free opportunity. But it's exactly the, carries the same weight in terms of the college admissions process for schools. It's the same, essentially the same assessment. They're used, the SAT had previously been offering an optional SAT portion. I'm not certain they're still doing that on the Saturday administration, but that's not something that's done on the School Day. The big difference, which was the front end of your question, is for the School Day SAT, all students, or I should say nearly all students in, in the school system are, are technically accountable to take it. You know, it's like, it's like Smarter Balance tests in grade three through eight. The schools do not have the option to tell, to, to tell anyone they can't take it. Students can always refuse, but the expectation is on the part of schools, you'll have all students sit for the exam. The only people that are, that have an alternate assessment are students that are in our intensive academic programs within special education. So students that are among the population of students who have an IEP, students typically that are in the lowest 1% of that population, and who are deemed significantly cognitively impaired is the, is the formal definition that the state provides. So it's, it's, you know, it's therefore a massive percent of our school population. I think on an SAT administration, and you might have a statistic better than this, I want to say that it's somewhere upwards in the neighborhood of, say, 85% of the school population sits for at least one Saturday SAT. So, so the School Day SAT is looking to pick up pretty much the other 15% of students. And we do, we typically have in the neighborhood of, when, when the dust settles and we're done with the makeup testing, we, we've had in the neighborhood of 99%. I was looking at those numbers for this, for this last year, and it was somewhere between 98 and 99, and I, I had to just check the math a little bit because we have some new seniors that we didn't have last year, and I had to know if I had to subtract them out or, or not. So I do know that students will sometimes take advantage of outside preparation courses. But the nice thing about the SAT is it's aligned to our curriculum. That was part of the curricular redesign for the state of Connecticut. They looked at what the SAT redesign was. The SAT looked at what the Common Core redesign was, and they met in the middle. And so simply by participation in our regular on-grade-level programming, students should have a very solid preparation for the SAT over the course of their high school experience. And we do try to integrate preparation and try to encourage, and I saw some of our student reps nodding their heads when I was talking about the Khan Academy, like we try to encourage participation in that as a tool that, that's available to them for additional practice based on what their interests are.
Yes, Renee?
So you mentioned that 15% wouldn't take the, the Saturday administration on a typical basis. Have the college-going participation rates changed among that 15% who wouldn't have taken the SAT otherwise?
It's, it's a good question, Renee. I would have to, when you say change, I would have to look at, say, some trends on that. I don't know the specific answer to that, but I do know that among that 15%, you'll have a variety. You'll have some folks who are looking at schools and colleges that don't necessarily require the SAT, and that's, that's one component. You'll have some folks who are not necessarily looking at college, maybe they're looking at career, maybe they're looking at the military. I would, you know, I would not say we, you have some folks who maybe, it would be a very small percentage, who may be going to a school more toward the south, and maybe they're, they're more active with the ACT, and they take the ACT instead. But honestly, it would be small. A lot of our kids in our, in our, in our school counseling department says, if you're going to take both the SAT and the ACT, take at least one of each. And then if you're going to do a third one, you know, pick the one that makes the most sense for the region that you're trying to go to.
Other questions? Yes, Gail?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on something that Claire had asked. I, what I guess I don't entirely understand is if you offer the SAT to be taken on a School Day, why, my first question is, why does then anybody take it on a Saturday? Would the test be, I'm assuming that the, that the School Day SAT is identical more or less to the Saturday. So my first question is, then, why do we even need a Saturday SAT? My second question is that your statistic here said that 91% of kids participated in the.
So I, so that was 91, I think, in that first paragraph, and you're on page 38?
It said, in West Hartford, we had a 91% participation rate that year.
That year, that year being the 2021. So in that paragraph, I was describing how the 2020 School Day test, so.
Because the kids were, were not in school?
So yeah, I'll, I'll review that part, and I apologize because it's probably a little confusing. So this, this report's about the 2022, and I didn't give you a statistic on the 2022 participation in the written report. So it's between, it's about 98%. And if I go back two years to 2020, when schools shut down, because the SAT is typically, the School Day SAT typically happens in that spring timeframe, it was canceled for the year. But what the college board did, because they essentially had a contract with the state of Connecticut, and the state of Connecticut wanted to provide that free opportunity, have an SAT for every kid in the state, they asked the college board, could, could the junior class who came, came back as seniors the following year, could there be an opportunity for them to take it in the, in the fall? And so that's what they did. I believe it was in either October or November, I don't remember which. So, so that was the 2020 administration actually happened, instead of happening in their junior year, at the end of their junior year, happened at the beginning of their senior year. The following year in 2021, when we were hybrid and, and all of that, and we had that significant percentage of kids that were still in the remote learning environment, which was obviously not unique to West Hartford. The state offered that SAT again. They offered it, you know, you had a number of students who were in the remote setting who didn't want to come into school. West Hartford created some situation where. West Hartford created some situation where we had separate rooms for those students with lower number of, number of students in the rooms so that we could really space them out, and in that year, we had 91% participation, which was, which we felt was a really good mark because it was over 90, but, but short of what we typically get of 99. And then this past year, last year, Megan and Caitlin's junior year last year, they took it, I'm sure, during the school day, and it was a more typical year, and I apologize, I didn't have that statistic in there, but we were, we were at between, I want to say it's between 98 and 99, so we were, we were back on track with our participation.
But can you just also address why anybody would take this on a Saturday?
So that is what students will typically do because, you know, there's pressure on the SAT. They feel that it's one of their college readiness benchmarks. Students, I can let the students follow up to whatever comments I make because they're going to have better answers than me, but typically the norm for a lot of kids is to take it twice in their, in their junior year. And so with the free SAT, there's, you know, and I haven't studied it because when it's given on a Saturday, it's not a West Hartford Public Schools thing, it's, it's a College Board thing, so I would expect there has been a reduction in the number of Saturday administrations. Some students will then potentially retake it in the fall of their senior year, and typically that's because they're trying to drive up a score in order to get into that college, and they haven't necessarily hit that mark yet. But that is, that is all sort of individual choice for folks and for families, and...
Well, it, it, it might help. Could you give a little bit of the history? I don't remember when Connecticut moved to the universal SAT versus where it used to simply be, it was simply offered on Saturdays, and we had nothing to do with that.
So yeah, I was going to actually offer a couple of things. Sometimes when I'm, when I'm talking with students, they'll, they'll actually focus because a lot of colleges will take their best math score and their best ELA score. They'll actually say, well, on this rotation of the SATs, I'm going to really study and really focus on the math section, and then the next one they'll, they'll swap and say, now I'm going to really focus on the ELA portion, if that makes sense, and then...
So meaning they might take it once in school, but it would only be offered once anyways for the year, so if they wanted a second chance, they would have to take it on a Saturday?
Right.
Okay.
And so sometimes they'll review their scores and say, oh, I'd really like to push my math a little bit more, and let me really focus on that. They, they seem to have all different kinds of, of strategies they, they use, and it sometimes will depend on what colleges they're targeting and what the nuances of those, those colleges are. Some of the other things they'll do is they'll actually do it pre, so they'll take, they almost consider it a pre-test, and they'll take it on a Saturday, and then they'll go into the school day SAT or another rotation of a Saturday session.
Something small, just because I've been taking it, it's been a process. One of the other reasons why a lot of people will take the Saturday SAT is because the timing of the school day SAT isn't super ideal for some people, simply because it's March, which is a difficult time of year because of AP exams and such, so a lot of preparation is usually distributed different type, different times of the year. For example, I prepared over the summer of my sophomore into junior year so that I could take it once in October and not have to worry about it, and then I sat for the March one as well, just because I was mandatory. But a lot of people will either take it then and then study over the summer, that following summer, and take it in the fall of their senior year. It's really down to timing of what works best for some of the students, and sometimes that one set date in the year isn't the best, or they won't perform as well as they'd hoped. So it's definitely, like you said, an individual basis type of thing, and the super score is also one of the main reasons why I've seen a lot of people do that. It's because it can be a little bit easier to isolate one subject or another.
One of the, the helpful things, I think, as you mentioned taking it earlier, is that you can, it's now interfaced in the College Board with Khan Academy, and so you upload and you interface your scores, and it develops targeted tutoring based on questions that you struggled with. So if you do want to improve in specific areas, there, there is a pathway for that that is free, which is something that we encourage as well for students.
And to follow up on what Dr. Moore was just saying, the students also take the PSAT in 11th grade, well, 10th and 11th grade in the fall. So once they receive those scores back, and it's usually in sort of mid-December, it's around this time that, that those scores start to post, they can then populate their Khan Academy account with a personalized learning, and then that will be in preparation for when they take that SAT in, in March.
Ethan? Oh, before you go, Ethan, pardon me. Megan, did you want to, or you, you're all set? All right, Ethan?
This is sort of a, was it going to be a question, and then it's sort of maybe a statement? My memory is there was, if you, the second time you take it, the expectation is you'd do better, and there was some kind of statistical analysis. That could just be a distorted memory, but that was my memory.
I, I believe that's true. I, I'm going off a memory as well, Ethan. And I'm, and, you know, the College Board is outstanding for its research, so I could dig into that if, if there's curiosity. But I, I do want to draw the line in the sand, and it goes back to what Andy was saying, like between Saturday and, and the school day, and none of these things, you know, I don't work for College Board, so none of these things are necessarily considered promotion. The, the stand, the state standards changed back in 2010, were started to be implemented in 11, 12, and it wasn't until 2016 that the state assessments caught up and changed, at least, at least the high school assessment changed. And so that was the first time that the state contracted with College Board and said, instead of contracting with the, whatever the company was that had created the, the old CAPT test, the Connecticut Academic Performance Test, they contracted with College Board and said, this is going to be our new state assessment. It measures our standards, it, it, and it's, and it's more practical. And, and by virtue of doing that, we had, they were paying someone for a state assessment anyway, now by virtue of that contract, they were able to provide a free administration to everyone, so they really saw it as an opportunity gap changer. And College Board didn't lose anything because if kids were taking it twice on the Saturday, well, now they're taking it once in school, and the state's paying them, and now they're taking it only once on a Saturday, and the family's paying them. But families do redo it, as you said, I think, because generally speaking, you'll do better in most colleges, as Michelle said, even if you did worse, they're going to count the better of your scores. And that's, most colleges and universities do that as a standard practice.
So my question was going to be, is the, the test in the day versus the test on Saturday, which comes first, or it sounds like it's both?
It can do, yeah, they have administrations throughout the year, and, and students will elect into them based on, you know, their schedules and, and what that looks like, but there's also patterns to it. You get very, you get very few juniors that are doing it in the fall, that typically tends to be more seniors, and then the juniors are typically looking at the winter and the spring, I think.
I, I would think it'd be interesting, if for no other reason, then it'd be useful for students to know, if I take it a second time, there may be a benefit or there may not.
Oh, absolutely, and they're getting counseling on that, not only from their classroom teachers, but from their school counselors.
And it's, it's tough to, it's tough to quantify how much of the benefit is because of additional instruction that they've received during that period, or also just because of the familiarity with the exam. I mean, as you can attest, the first time you take it, there's, there's nerves involved because you don't know what it's going to be, it's timed, there's, there's pressure under it, and I think the more you're in situations like that, the better that, that you perform.
Thank you.
Other que, Gail?
So given the report you gave us a few weeks ago, and the one we just had you give us, thank you for both reports, I'm just curious if you could talk just for a few minutes about what the district is doing to try to turn these numbers around and the ones we saw a few weeks ago?
That's a great question. One of the things, and we'll talk about the high school, and I'll, I'll set it up, but then I know Michelle can run with this. One of the biggest things that we did, started this year in mathematics specifically, is we realigned the sequence of the courses, and I think, I think we presented on that in the previous year because it was being implemented this year, so the board had good knowledge about it. But what, what you may remember, Gail, what I certainly lived when I was in high school, I followed a sequence of math courses that went algebra typically in my freshman year, geometry in my sophomore year, which was a totally different animal, and then second year algebra, and then on into pre-calculus or advanced algebra, or whatever, whatever the schools might have called it at the time. And there's been a lot of research that says that doesn't make the best sense, and, and there's a long history that I won't bore you with why that's true, and it's a very long history, it's over, it's hundreds of years old that has to do with how, what math was to be taught in the public schools. So the math department, and really a lot of leadership from Dr. Graveline that I compliment her for, you know, was looking into some national best practices and had pitched this model where we would reorder our curriculum to be first year algebra as a, as a freshman typically, second year algebra in your, in your sophomore year, and then there's a, a revamp of geometry and a greater inclusion of statistics, so now there's a course that's kind of geometry and, and statistics or geometry and data analysis in, in the third year. And so we have our first cohorts of students going through this new sequence in anticipation. This also is in dramatic alignment to what that's going to mean on the SAT. And so, so right off the bat through programming, that's, that's going to, that's going to, we would, we would hope hit a lot of people. We also have our interventions, which we can talk about, but I'm, I'm not doing very well at all sharing my airtime, so I'm going to let Michelle talk a little bit on this, and if there's follow-ups, we can go back and forth.
So yeah, there's, there's, there's short game and the long game, right? So some of the short game stuff is happening at the high schools where, especially in math, where it's such a progression of building, in the building process, they're doing a lot of gap analysis with students within the math classes and just really evidencing what is, what is missing, what did they miss along the way, and trying to fill those gaps as they have teaching the curriculum. So that's, that's a really nuanced process that, that they're, that they're doing right now, and trying to fill those gaps while also keeping pace with, with the curriculum that's intended for whatever course that they're teaching. And then at the middle school, as you know, we've had the gift of math coaching, who, those coaches are working directly with teachers in the classroom in, in a variety of ways, in co-teaching, in modeling lessons, in working with kids one-on-one within the classroom, and monitoring in a much closer way what our tier-two math tutors are being able to provide to students during their learning labs at the middle school level. So the more we can do in terms of catching kids up at the lower levels in middle school, we're going to see that trend that Paul had identified, 16 to 2019, where we were on that really steady, nice growth increase, we're, we're, that's our goal, is, is to get back to that.
I'll add two more things. Under English Language Arts, we do have the reading specialists, we have reading specialists at each of our high schools, and they work, they work that, that the other end of that coin in terms of intervention, and we're trying to do more push-ins so that we can, we want to get to a coaching model within literacy with those folks as well, balancing out their intervention loads. But then you also have to look across your ESOL and your, and your special education population, and both of those populations, the, the interventions and the program supports are going to be totally based on some of the individual needs. So if I look at ESOL, for instance, I can have a student in high school who's still identified, maybe they came to this country somewhere in their middle years, and they're, they're getting close to grade level, and so their supports look very, very different from, I just showed up in grade 10, and I, and I am a, I'm a beginner, I don't have a lot of English. We, at the high school, we tend to get some students who have interrupted education, they may have had multiple years in the home country without being in a formalized school setting, and so their supports are more dramatic, and the SAT is, you know, not something that we're as worried about, we're, we're, we're more worried with making sure we deal with that. And you can play that out to the degree of need equally with students with disabilities, and that's where they have individualized goals for their learning that are, that are reviewed annually within the IEP process. So, you know, you look at severity of need, some are, some just need some modest supports and some need more major supports, and, and that's part of the new CT-Seds where those learning objectives need to be tied to specific standards within the grade level so that, so that we can always be making continuous progress. But none of those are overnight fixes, those are typically, how'd we do over the three, how'd we do over a three-year period?
Just follow up with one other question. So is this additional staff that you guys have sort of hired to try to, like you said, to fill these gaps or to, you know, make improvement, or is this stuff that was already...
So the math coach at the high school was additional staff that we got under ESSER, but our reading specialists have been in place at our high school for as long as I can remember.
Yeah, I mean, this is actually a really good, a really good foundation going in when we talk about the budget, because we've, in addition to, you know, we've, we've, as part of our recovery effort, we allocated funding through ESSER funding to the math coaches, to literacy specialists, to the tutors. We've been keeping class sizes smaller, knowing that that's a positive intervention, so we have, you know, roughly seven, eight teachers that are allocated to this, and so these are the, the conversations that we're going to have to have when it comes to budget, because these are not, as we've said all along, this is not a one-year. This is a, this is a three-to-four-year recovery period. This doesn't turn overnight, and I, I think as Paul and Michelle said, it was, you know, this is, where we are is encouraging because we're, we're further along than others in, in capturing that gap, but we still have work to do. And so that's where these additional resources have, have been placed, and that's what we're going to be talking about for the budget as to what we continue and what we still need going forward.
Ethan?
I was, just to follow up on what Andy said, I was sort of going to go there anyways. I seem to remember before last year at some point, and I'm just trying to make sure, is there was like a summer school program that was also part of ESSER that helped, and so I...
I think you're referring to, to the middle school portion of our, of our summer school program.
Transition program.
Yeah. Yes, you're, you're correct. We did, and we had it this past summer as well, so summer of 2022, and then previous to that, summer 2021.
And then, let me, let me add one thing before your question. We also have a, a high school summer program that's been in place prior to ESSER, but one of the things that we've been doing with ESSER is we've been providing scholarships so that a greater number of students can attend that.
I think that's what I remember. So my question was going to be, there's a number of things you've done with ESSER and without ESSER. The ESSER money unfortunately will be going away in a year plus. It would be good to know how you value each of them in prioritization, how much it costs, how much, otherwise we're just sitting blind, and, and I know it's a large number, and some things work for some people, some don't. At the same time, I think it's important for prioritization to sort of say, this is where we should, this is where we get this band, this is where we get, because otherwise...
And that's, and that's, that's our budget process, Ethan. That's what we're going to, we're going to illustrate and, and develop in the budget process for that. You know, I'll, I'll be the first to tell you right now, as we've discussed, it's all valuable, it's all needed. It's all impacting students, and it's all impacting their growth, and it's not, it's not this is better than this because it depends on the number of students impacted, but we're going to have to make some of those decisions to decide where, where we're going to put some of those resources, what we can afford and what we can't afford.
It's finite resources, and that, that would just be helpful to have those discussions upfront as opposed to, so I mean, if you could...
That's part of our, that's part of the budget process.
Okay, because I don't remember, last year we had the ESSER funds, we had the ESSER funds for, but they're going away, so it becomes...
Part of them are going away. Remember, we have a two-year scale down.
No, I know, I know, but it'll be two years, so, okay, thank you. That was what I had.
Claire, yes?
So I have a quick question and then just an observation. So the WHPS performance of 25% in literacy and 20% in math for the state, is that all DIRGs?
Yes, that's all DIRGs. So top, top quarter, top 20% for, for mathematics.
For the state.
And, and very competitive with just our DIRG, which is, you know, one of the more competitive DIRGs.
And, and that was the statement I wanted to make, that it was very telling that on page 41... And, and that was the statement I wanted to make, that it was very telling that on page 41 with your high needs group, DURG B has no data because it's not applicable because they don't have the ESOL population, they don't have the numbers of minorities and, and the high needs. So you can't even compare the data. I like that we're compared to that DURG because it does set the bar high. But the fact that, you know, we ended up with half the loss, any loss is bad, but half the loss in both areas is, is amazing. So there's a lot of hard work happening with the kids, with the teachers, with the admin. It's been a tragedy nationwide, worldwide, the loss. But we must have been doing something right to do so well against our DURG.
That's a great point. I was just gonna say, Paul, when was the DURGS where last calculated 20 years ago? Yeah, that's one of our biggest frustrations in many parts of the state is that our DURG doesn't really apply to us anymore. 20 years ago, we may have looked like some of those communities, but we don't now. We have greater challenges and greater needs. And so it's, it's not, it's not a real great comparison for us anymore.
And I, I wanted to just thank you for the comment. I wanted to echo Andy's words because I couldn't have said it better than he did. We're very encouraged by this. We do have a lot of work to do, but I wanna throw, take the opportunity to throw the thanks out, you know, because this work is done in the trenches with the teachers. And, and it's, it's all a reflection of, of what they did during the pandemic, post-pandemic, and what they're continuing to do, so.
Other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you very, very much. And as always, appreciate the thorough and empathic way and informed way that you present the information and certainly speaking of opportunity gaps as opposed to phrasing it other ways. And I like again how you visually disaggregated the data, acknowledging how when it comes to disparities and challenges, how we cannot just exclusively attribute it to race and how when it comes to socioeconomic challenges, that applies to any group. So thank you very much. Thank you. And watch your heads, watch your heads as you stand. And as we continue on, we will now move on to routine matters and our financial reports. And we'll have Liz Hewitt to join us at the table. And today I believe we're having a joint effort in giving our financial report by our newer financial examiner, Claire, and an oldie but goodie financial examiner, Mr. Ethan. So I will pass it to you all.
I was gonna go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Or did you have? Okay, all right. So the school funds are reported in four categories in terms of budget variance, which is probably the word Jessica Riddick can put in. Four categories, first category where most of the funding for the school system is, is the general fund, which was budgeted for fiscal year '22. Actually fiscal is '23, yeah. Fiscal year '23 at 181.1 million. Second category is the state and federal grants fund. At this point, the school system has 16.9 million in funds, both appropriated and open. Third category is special funds report, which covers six different funds. And the fourth is the nutrition services as reported. So in terms of the general fund, as of the October 2022 time period, the general fund report full year is projecting a for positive overall full year budget variance of $50,000. While positive, the variance for the fiscal year is basically the same as the end of September. And it's just above, actually it's just below, just above the budget where we need to be. And sort of a margin when you look at 170 million plus. As with the fiscal year '22 budget, we have a trade-off in accounts with the variance in total salary line being projected to be a positive 550,000 budget variance. And the purchased services, which basically outsourced services, projected to have a negative budget variance of $500,000. And the savings in teacher salary, which is where the salary line is, is a combination of teacher salary mix and teacher substitution vacancy. It's been offset by the need on the negative side to fill in resource gaps primarily in terms of supporting the special student needs without source resources. Did I miss anything? Good, okay. Any questions on that one? In terms of the state and federal grants, there was 16.9 million that have been awarded that are, to speak and play, 11.7 of that being used or awarded for the current fiscal year. The remaining 5.2, most of that is ESER grant fund of 4.7 million to be utilized in the fiscal year '24 school year. That's why I was saying we need to prioritize that because that's going away after fiscal year '24. And in terms of special funds, the six different funds are projected to end the fiscal year with 1.9 million balance, which is flat to the June '22 end-of-year balance. So minimal change. And then finally, in terms of nutrition service funds, it's been discussed at prior board meetings, the fund has been generating more income than the pre-pandemic period. Students are currently, can buy meals free of charge, the end, free of charge till the end of this.
Yes, up until the winter break.
Starts up again January 3rd.
When we return from winter break, we'll go back to paid meal service.
Okay, payments, okay. And approximately from the statistics, half the students are getting their meals this way. And then with that extra income, the, that has been generated, the school administration is planning to make capital equipment improvements where there are replacement or upgrade needs. And so far, $82,000 has been spent or allocated. And that's what I had. Claire, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, yes.
I just had one question. So the nutrition funds, we have a balance that's almost $3 million, is that correct? And is that, that's coming, is that a federal, where's that fund, where's that money coming from?
You mean, how did we get to that amount?
How'd you get that money?
So we've seen significant increases in the number of students who took advantage of free meals during the pandemic. So it really came from federal and state grant funding for those free meals. Our grant funding will end approximately mid-December. We will continue the free meals so that we'll use up some of those funds until we get back to a paid meal service on January 3rd. And then what we're looking at is some capital improvements that our cafeterias need. This really is the opportunity that we have to make some of those deferred maintenance, deferred purchases. And so we're taking a look at that as the best way to utilize that balance. We're also considering that our volumes may drop considerably once we get to January. You know, at this point in time, we're serving an average of about 4,600 meals. Pre-pandemic, that was closer to about 2,500. So with increased prices of food, supplies, et cetera, we really don't know what the second half of this year is going to bring. So we'll have to look and see what our experience is, how much of that balance we end up using by the end of the year so that we can make some decisions going forward. But the goal of this fund is to not have any general fund support. We want it to be self-sufficient. And so we, we do need some sort of a cushion to ensure that, that we can do that.
So just follow-up, I, you are generating these funds because kids are signing up for these free meals? And you're getting federal funds to support that?
Exactly. So we have to report the number of meals. Students still have to like punch in their ID number. So we have a count of how many meals are served every day. And currently, we receive a reimbursement from the government for each meal, as do all districts in the country.
Right. So my question is, why then, you know, if we're serving these meals, why do we end up with so much extra money?
It has to do with the reimbursement rate versus our costs. And it's really a matter of volume. So for example, if, if 2,500 meals per day could cover all of our fixed costs, all of our employee costs, our benefits, et cetera, when we serve more meals than that, then our profit margin on the others exceeds it and we've been able to build our reserve.
So you're way above your breakeven.
We're way above our breakeven because, you know, certainly the same employees can, can serve many more meals. So it's really a matter of volume.
Claire? Yes? If I understand correctly, à la carte was, kids did pay for à la carte, but if you got the whole meal or the, the full meal. So in some ways, there was still money coming in from kids' home, or home-funded accounts.
That's correct. So if you, if you elected to get a meal which has certain components in it based upon federal guidelines, the meal itself was free. If you elected to buy just certain items à la carte because you wanted, I don't know, an extra banana or an extra juice or something, you could do that. And we did receive cash for those funds or payment for those, those items.
Other questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Claire and Ethan. And with that, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the, the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending October 31st, 2022. Is there a motion?
I make a motion?
Thank you, Claire. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ethan.
Discussion?
All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You pose? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And Liz, thank you very much. And now moving on to approval of the minutes, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of, hmm, quick question. I have a quick question, I think, with the minutes, pardon me. Look, I'll wait for discussion, pardon me. Recommendation, the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting on November the 16th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? November 16th, 2022, pardon, 2022, yes. Is there a second to 2022?
I'll second 22.
Thank you, thank you, Ethan. Discussion. So just a quick question, I, I wonder with, and pardon me for not asking this beforehand, with the, nope, I think it was already answered. I asked a question and answered it myself, so please pardon. I, yes, yes indeed. Any other discussion or mysterious questions? All right, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you. And any pose? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now moving on to board member communication and reports. So in regard to our superintendent search update, we'll share where we are with that. And so first of all, I want to thank all of you who responded to the call, to respond to the survey in regard to our superintendent search. As we know, this is a collective process in that, yes, we do have a personnel search committee, which is comprised of the Board of Education members, but we certainly want to hear from the community in regard to this process as well. So a survey was put out and we received hundreds and hundreds of responses. I, I believe over 600, over 600 responses, which is wonderful. However, that was one piece. We also are having focus groups. And we have focus groups that are taking place, have already started and will continue to take place. The intent for the focus group was to hear from various stakeholders in the community, that being parents, students, teachers, administrators, different community members defined in different ways. And so we are so thankful for those that have participated in the focus group and those who intend to participate in the focus group. We also know that in terms of the posting for the superintendent search, that officially closed on December the 1st. And we are pleased that we have had a good number of responses. We will hear more of, get a more specific information in regard to the number that, of individuals that have put their names in the hat. But we are thankful for those who have stepped in to the call of wanting to serve and lead our district moving forward. And so we have many moving parts that are happening and many moving parts that will continue to happen. And as it relates to the process moving forward, again, with the survey that was completed, thank you so much for those who participated in that. And as we have our focus groups, which will be led by our teammates with CES, they will be facilitating our focus groups. And they are going to take notes and gather information that is shared from the focus groups as they are taking information from the surveys as well. And from that information, they're going to synthesize it all together and put together a candidate profile. And this candidate profile will reflect who we are looking to lead us moving forward in our district. And this will facilitate the personnel search committee in regard to determining who that individual will be. So we're in the earlier phases of that process. As we continue to move forward, we will share updates with you. But want to thank you very much for those who are part of the process in a solution-focused way, helping us again to identify our new superintendent. And with that, more to come. And so now moving on to, oh, you have, oh, I was gonna move on to that, yes, 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 yes. No, no, move, no, 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 never, never. Now moving on to other information of board reports. So yes, Ari, please do share.
I just wanted to present an update for the Bridge Family Center and let everyone know kind of the amazing work that they are doing for our town. Children, adolescents, families, I can't say enough good things. I did wanna mention that throughout the summer, they continued to offer counseling for over 30 students. And I do think that that really speaks to kind of the, the increased need and level of acuity for kind of the behavioral health issues that our children and teens are currently experiencing. They talked about kind of what themes they're seeing within the youth and family services, within the therapy component. A lot of the themes surround interpersonal difficulties, kind of still readjusting to being back in school full-time, social demands, identity issues, some issues related to body image and healthy habits. And then a, a major theme that has, or a major trend that has come out in this school year is dealing with grief. And, you know, we always assume that it's related to COVID. But what they were communicating is, is that it's really been a lot of grief for family or parental loss, that that's been a huge trend in the cases that they're seeing. So much so that they have sent some staff to trainings on grief and both internally and externally. So they're really kind of providing the training needed for staff to address these needs. Currently, through the school year, they have 50 students for school-based counseling, 25 students for mentoring and 43 students for groups and are planning for new groups after the first of the year. So they're just continuing to provide those services that our, our, our children and teens need. They also gave an update with regard to the base, which is the West Hartford Teen Center. There's been a steady increase in attendance at the base. And over 75 teens have attended the teen center just in the month of November. So I do think in terms of getting back to kind of in-person programming, socializing, I think that that piece is really helping to contribute to that return to normalcy for a lot of our teens. With regard to the Family Resource Center, which is also part of the Bridge, all of the services have returned to in-person format, which I think is, best serves our, our community. 53 families are attending the Early Learning Play Groups. 15 families are participating in Baby Bookworms, which is a family literacy program. Nine families speaking seven different languages are enrolled in English for Families, which is a class that's offered in partnership with West Hartford Adult Education. 13 preschoolers attend Peace Place, which is before and after-school care for preschoolers. 12 families have participated in Wednesday Walks, which is families coming together and visiting various neighborhood parks. And then I thought this was an interesting statistic, and Lauren, I think you can relate to this. Three PLTI alum currently represent West Hartford on the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood Parent Cabinet, I'm assuming you're one of the three. And then 14 PLTI graduates are currently serving on nine different community boards or committees, including the Board of Education and the Town Council. So I think that's, that speaks a lot to kind of what the Bridge is giving to our community and empowering parents to take an active role in our community.
If I could just add real quick, Catherine Dean, who is the wife of Steve Dean, who's the head of the Parent Teacher Council for the district, she is in charge of, of the program there and does an outstanding job. And I know would, would appreciate anyone signing up. They're currently recruiting for the next cohort of that. And it is a fantastic program that really helps parents understand some of the behind-the-scenes work that's being done in schools and really become strong advocates, both at. being done in schools and really become strong advocates, both at the early childhood level, even, even moving on to the post-secondary level as well. Uh, you know, the, I can't say enough about the Bridge. Melissa and, and I, uh, you know, work with them regularly and just can't say enough about the work that, that Margaret and Chris Dutton do. Just really spectacular. Uh, just, just slogging through, uh, the past couple of years and, and really deserve all the praise for that.
All right. Can I ask?
Yes.
Um, so they, they are currently recruiting, um, new people. Um, I have to say, it, it was the best thing that I've done in West Hartford. And if you're looking for a way to be part of the community or find a way, um, it, it's an amazing program. Um, and one little perk that you get out of the many is you make lifelong friends. And so, um, there's great opportunities.
Thank you, Ari, for the update. Echo all that was said, as I wink to you as well, Claire, and certainly speak volumes to PLTI. So thank you and thank you, Andy, as well to speaking well of that. Any other updates or board reports? Do just want to say in regard to the foundation, um, well, sort of Foundation of Public Giving, West Hartford Foundation, rather, for West Hartford. Um, as we know, this is a wonderful organization that helps provide grants for our teachers to support learning opportunities within our schools. And we know this past Tuesday was Giving Tuesday. Um, however, please do not limit your giving to this wonderful organization just Tuesday. So certainly you can contribute at any point in time. And the foundation has done a wonderful job, uh, in helping to expand the learning opportunities for our young people and the creative ways in which it can be done. So thank you, thank you, thank you so much for that. And with that, we shall move on now to future business, announcement of future meeting dates. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, December the 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, right here in room 314, followed by Tuesday, January the 17th, oh my, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting. And we will come together at that time here in room 314. Do we have a request for any other future agenda items? Seeing none, do we have any comments from visitors that are here with us? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session. Now seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned at 8:48.